Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, November 5th, 2024 at 4:40 PM in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation and unceded territories of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of Algonquin and Ishanape, Ojibwe, Cree, and Mati people in our communities since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Call to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda, may have a mover. Councilor Ranger, in seconded by Councilor Shaba.
Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024 be approved as circulated.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous? Item number three, declaration of the covenary interest. None noted? Item number four, petitions and delegations, there are none this evening. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations, moved by Councilor Kylie, in seconded by Councilor Owens.
It resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meeting, minutes of the regular meeting of council held October 15th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous? May have a mover? Councilor Dyken, seconded by seconded by Councilor Owens.
It resolved that council adopt the minutes of the following meeting, minutes of the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Committee held April 24th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous? Item number 5.3, local and regional board minutes, moved by Councilor Shaba, seconded by Councilor Kylie.
It resolved that council receive the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the Kirkland Public Library Board held September 19th, 2024, and minutes of the District of Commissal Social Services Administration Board Directors held September 18th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous? Item number 6.1, proposed procurement of goods and services policy. It will be presented by Ryan Dangelman, Corporate Manager, Procurement and Risk Management, may have a mover? Councilor Ranger, seconded by Councilor Owens. There you may proceed, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through your good counsel.
Oh, sorry, before I proceed, I will have the reading in a moment.
It resolved that report number 2024, 439, made a proposed procurement of goods and services policy received. And the council approved the procurement of goods and services policy as presented. And that by law 15125 is being a bylaw to provide for the purchase of goods and services by the town of Kirkland Lake be repealed effective January 1st, 2025. And finally, that the procurement of goods and services policy be numbered and inserted into the corporate policy manual.
Thank you, now you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and for your good counsel. This evening, we are bringing forward an updated procurement of goods and services policy. This policy, as required by the municipal act, establishes procurement guidelines for municipal staff to foster enhanced internal controls and ensure purchases meet best value for required quality and service. The proposed policy provides a transparent process for council, vendors, staff, and the taxpayer to ensure public trust and how municipal funds are expressed. At the end of 2020, the town's previous procurement policy was repealed. And since that time, the town has relied upon less detailed procurement by law to guide purchasing activities. The proposed policy includes updates to new public procurement practices, improvements to internal controls and fiscal management, consideration to Canadian Free Trade Agreement standards, as well as addressing the needs specific to the town that will improve business processes and service delivery. The proposed policy would be implemented January 1st to allow sufficient time to retrain staff on updated processes and practices. Implementation of the proposed policy will keep us compliant with the act and provide a guide for all staff to follow throughout the organization in all procurement endeavors. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that. Just before I open the table, just as a reminder, I noticed in the policy, it did give directors permission to make decisions up to 100,000 before taxes. Can you just give a reminder why before taxes would be included?
Because taxes, depending where they come from, because we're an open procurement agency, these could come from anywhere. It's hard to estimate taxes from maybe a different province. And you also include shipping fees in there if things are coming from overseas. So it's hard to quantify those into your procurement thresholds. So that's why they're removed and just for a cost of the person itself.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from members of council? Councilor Owen?
Yes, through you, your worship. I'm just looking for an explanation here. 8.6, the chief administrator, administration officer has discretion used under a funds established by virtue of agreement between CEO and town. That's funds that we've allocated in his contract, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, continue. Okay. Page 10 of 19, 9.8.8. Let me find it here. Reporting will not include summaries of bids. As this information will remain confidential. I'm just I'm wondering what that includes, does that include what the other companies bid? Like what? What summary?
So through you, Madam Mayor, to Councilor Owen. So this relates to request for proposals. So sometimes the information provided by companies could be proprietary to them. So it's not always available to discuss the actual bids itself. That would, so what would be related is more to the scoring of the document and the decision that was made, but again, because it's a proposal and not a request for tender where we want very specific criteria, this is somebody proposing something that we may not have full knowledge on what we're looking for. It's not recommended that you would provide that information to the public. But again, as you can, as you can see in that summary, municipal freedom of information requests can always be submitted and we could comply at that time.
To you, your worship. So what I'm asking is like and this has gone back and forth on different different contracts, different requests for proposals. Sometimes we get what the other companies bid and who they were. And sometimes we don't. And that's really what I'm asking is, does this mean if you make the recommendation to council that we go with this request for proposal? Are we going to get the names of the other companies and how much they bid? That's really my question.
So, oh, sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, when it comes to proposals, you're not always comparing apples to apples. Unlike, again, a request for a tender, that could be for a hundred million. You're, you're asking for a very specific item, you know the details of what you're looking for. But when it comes to a proposal, maybe a good example is a park. You know, one company might offer a certain amount of structures. Another company might offer a different type of structure. If they were comparing apples to apples, price would be relevant. But when you're comparing a proposal and someone is giving you one idea and another company is giving you another idea, price is only a small factor in the overall scoring matrix. So again, it's hard to, it's hard to disclose pricing again, it's not best practice to do so in a proposal. Again, because you're not comparing apples to apples.
It's an excellent way to explain that. Do you have anything further?
Through you, your worship, I just want to thank the manager for answering my questions, I greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, I thank you too, Madam Chair, to I've read this here and what I really wanted to see for people to understand is that we will at least try our very best to shop local wherever is possible. I don't know if that's in here somewhere, but that's what I want to see, because people pay taxes here to support the town. And I would like the town to in turn patronize them. Number two is I'm going to just pick up from where Council Owen stopped. I don't know, at her last meeting, I think we more or less agree that when we have bids coming in, notwithstanding who won, that we should be able to see the rest of the people that put in bids. That's, I didn't vote on it, but people really think it's a good idea, it was done in the past, whatnot. And I do understand you saying, well, you know, there are other factors too that will interplay in that bidding process. I, as you put it, comparing apples and oranges, but I'll submit to you that that's where you come in to try to tell us the difference between those apples and oranges. But at least we see all the numbers, we may not agree with you, but at least we see all the bids. I think that's, I don't know, that's what I would like to see. You know, we got five bidders, one guy won, okay, we saw the price of that guy, maybe high, low, middle point, but we see the rest. And you can explain to us the rationale, which you guys always do very effectively, as to why this A company was successful and the rest was not. And then we leave it at that, and the public will see that, that would be very transparent. When we say we're transparent, that's to me, that's the operational definition of transparency. So everybody will see right there, guys, we make a decision, may not be based on price, which may not necessarily be on price, even though I like to see be on price, because you know, we're saving money. We'll be on other things which everybody will understand. So my last one is this, I'm looking at sheet B that you have here. And I look at item number seven. Other professional consultants, special services up to $75,000. There seem to be a clue that from the open competitive procurement process, any reason why, please?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, Councilor Shaba. So there are occasions where directors may find it in their best interest to go directly to a consultant for certain, again, legal services where we may not be able to get competitive pricing. That, the reason that is included in this exclusion schedule again is for that reason where we may not have, we have a legal representation, we may not be able to go out to get quotes for something of that nature. Same again for accounting auditing services. We may be able to go out, but if we have a certain service that has been dealing with us, that it may be under the director's discretion to go out to somebody that they already are working with or dealing with, those are just some examples that could follow come, but you would, you, we would hope that staff would recognize that this is a a new procurement, something they haven't done before, that they would be going out to trying to get quotes and seeing what's available, but this just leaves some wiggle room for the ability to go to somebody if they may find a need to do so, somebody that's familiar with, somebody that already worked for, something of that.
Thank you. Anything further for members of council? Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Ranger.
Through you, Madam Mayor, there's actually three questions and maybe if Councilor Shaba would just ask one question at a time.
So I do, if that was a point of order, I do apologize, I heard them more as statements rather than questions. Yeah, so that is my, if that's a point of order, I do agree that I interpreted them as more as statements than questions. So could you quickly repeat those two initial questions?
Oh, no, I started with a statement, so my apology.
So thank you for that, I do appreciate that.
You know, I started with a statement, what I like to see, what I didn't see in the report, which means to encourage us to shop local, well, that's just a statement. My main question is that of item number seven is Schedule B, whereas we have an amount, $75,000, up to $75,000, which is not going to be through the competitive process. On that, can you answer your, answer the question? So that was, that's the only question that I, that I had in there.
Thank you, that was what I, thank you, sir. I do appreciate that, Councilor Ranger, you do have questions?
No, for me. I'm sorry.
Oh, so you were just, okay, perfect.
I forgive the answers, but I already
Okay, so any questions for members of council? Nothing noted? Do we need the reading of the motion again? Is everybody confident in what they're voting for? Excellent, all in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous? Thank you, sir. Item number 6.2, proposed compensation and pay equity policy. This will be presented by CEO Alan Smith, may have a mover? Councilor Ranger, seconded? Councilor Owens? Madam Clerk?
It resolved that report number 2024, CAO 12, entitled proposed compensation and pay equity policy be received. And that council approved the compensation and pay equity policy as presented. And that Corp 202017 overtime policy and Corp 202018 pay all employees policy being hereby repealed. And that by law 2414 being a by law to establish remuneration adjustments for non-union employees be repealed effective January 1st, 2025. And that the compensation and pay equity policy be numbered and inserted into the corporate policy manual. And finally, that housekeeping amendments to Schedule A of by law 2259 being a by law to establish a schedule of salaries be brought forward for three readings on November 19th, 2024.
Thank you.
Through Madam Mayor, to members of council. Like all public sector employers, the town Kirkland Lake has obligations under the Pay Equity Act to ensure jobs of equal value receive equal pay by eliminating sex-based wage discrimination and by continuing to maintain discrimination-free wages into the future. To meet these obligations in 2022, as council is aware and obvious, I believe, the town will be comprehensive and pay equity review through Gallagher Bank of Services. The review included updating internal equity through job evaluation, pay equity analysis to ensure legislative compliance, and a market study to assess the town's competitiveness against a defined comparative group. As a result of this review, the town remains externally competitive. However, we must establish a policy for pay equity to remain in legislative compliance. In order to develop this policy, the town's strategic initiatives Workplace Performance Quarter reviewed current town policies and up relevant by law and was able to combine components of each to have one comprehensive compensation and pay equity policy that meets the requirements of the Pay Equity Act, where employees are compensated in an internally equitable and externally competitive manner based on job responsibilities, qualifications, and performance. Therefore, having this proposed policy in place eliminates the need for having the current overtime policy, pay all employees policy, and by law 24-014 being a by law to establish remuneration adjustments for non-union employees, COLA adjustment. It's important to note that as stated in the proposed compensation and pay equity policy in review, like what we conducted 2022, must be completed every five years, so the next review will be completed in 2027. Having this review will make sure the town remains internally equitable and externally competitive. The report also includes an updated salary grid since the one that was completed in 2022. Therefore, we just need to make some housekeeping amendments to Schedule A of the by law 2259. Staff will receive training on the new policy and the job evaluation committee will be formed as there are some positions that require revaluation. By adopting the recommendations contained in this report, the town continues to demonstrate its commitment to uphold the pay equity principles, ensuring transparency and consistency in pay equity practices and fostering positive work environment for employees. This is another component of moving the town to be an employer of choice.
Thank you, questions from the table? Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair, thank you very much, and for our consideration, I'm looking at the retroactivity to January 1st, 2022. Therefore, council consideration, there is a second bullet implementing proposed retroactive to January 1st, 2022.
Which page do you want?
It's a Gallagher?
That was the attachment, I believe.
Attachment, yeah.
That was summary that was presented back in 2022.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That was just, sorry, that was just to review, just to refresh council's memory.
Alright, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Other than that, that's it, I thought. I'm okay with it, thank you, thank you.
Councilor Kylie?
Yeah, through you, your worship. My question is more along the when pay equity is put through, that council have some knowledge of what these adjustments are going to be? Not sure if it's in your case of the last CAO. It was like pulling teeth to find out what that person was being paid. It's not that we don't agree with, with the adjustment, but I think it's prudent for council to know whether it be in a closed meeting, what these salaries are for these individuals, for senior management of the town.
Through you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So when we did the, back in 2022, when we did the pay equity review and compensation review, this is the first time we've done it in 31 years, right? So so when we went through the compensation review and the study, we did provide a updated salary grid for 2022. So we've also, we've also included the salary grid for 2024, which outlines the positions and the salary ranges of those. So when we go back in 2027 and do this whole process again, you know, council will also receive.
Okay.
Councilor Owen?
Yes, through you, your worship, to CAO. First off, I came from a work environment where we never knew what the salary policy was or whether there was pay equity or anything else. So I appreciate the fact that the employees of the town Kirkland Lake can pick up a document or will be able to pick up a document, they'll be able to read it and understand fully exactly where they stand and what applies to them. So from a guy that never had that, I appreciate that. But I do have some other questions. I am concerned and apparently I screwed up my numbers when I was writing down today, but I think this one is right, 7.6.1. That a formal pay equity review be done every five years, I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is that we're going to hire an outside consultant to do it. We have an HR department, they're supposed to be experts. Like, I have a real hard time committing to hiring consultant every five years, we're spending ratepayers' money. And yet, we're supposed to be having an expert within the town. So I I'm not opposing every five years, that sounds like a reasonable time period to do a review, but I don't like to hire an outside consultant.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to members of council. When we do these reviews every five years, you'll, this is a very specialized field. And it is, I don't know in municipality that there's not higher, you know, sector consultant to do this type of work. We have a very talented HR department. But when it comes to this, this is specialized. And we also want to make sure it is done correctly. And having those individuals that specialize in this type of work, you know, gives us a more comprehensive and better detailed analysis than we are able to meet the pay equity legislation. So I do appreciate your comment of hiring a consultant, but we highly recommend using that approach, so we are fully compliant with what we have to do.
Councilor Ranger?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I'm more comfortable having an external consultant hired because these are the more higher up positions and I wouldn't want it to be perceived that there's bias in what other salaries may increase based on these adjustments that may be coming or that there's perceived influence to encourage increases. So by using an external consultant, there would be less perceived influence on what those grids may look like. Thank you.
So just for clarification, during our last pay equity review, it was all position, was it not?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Councilor Kylie?
Through you, your worship. I would agree with Councilor Owen. You don't have to be a consultant to to take, like, to see, we'll use a CAO position, for example, CAO position in Capus Facing, Espinola. You can come up with four or five communities very easily and get, find out what their salary is. I don't think you have to be a mental expert in getting this information. I think it's available. It just requires a little bit of homework on the part of ourselves, that's my opinion.
Through Madam Mayor, to members of council, I do appreciate your comments. I think if you were to review the work that was done in 2022, you see how specialized this work is. And also going through this process, we're also to determine where we stand competitively, what percentile we are. Right now, we're at the 55th percentile, meaning that, you know, there's 45% above us pay more than, and we are above 55% by municipality. So we do get some insights into, into the town as a whole when it comes to our workforce that would be very, very difficult to replicate from our resources. And again, as mentioned by Councilor Ranger, it does add that picks the bias out of our analysis. And again, I would recommend using that third party. I'm sure we can have a more detailed discussion in 2027.
Follow up, Councilor Owen?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, if that's all right, your worship. I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, and hopefully I got my numbers right here. Market survey every five years if necessary, would that be done in-house or would that again be a commitment to hire a consultant every five years?
It would be, this is the same work.
Okay, that's the same.
The same work, yeah.
Okay. And if it's okay, worship, I have one more question. Right now, oh, and I want to make clarification too, there are low non-management jobs included in this as well, things like the accounts payable, accounts receivable, water clerk. There's a number of non-management jobs that will be affected by this policy. Right now, where is this system set up? The non-management employees get the same increases as, or the non-union employees get the same increases as the union employees? No?
If I may.
Please, please, correct.
Madam Mayor, too.
Please.
Part of our review, part of this policy, okay? What we've done is we're repealing the by law that would link non-union to QP 26 of those COLA adjustments, cost of living adjustments, okay? So that no longer applies. The COLA adjustment, cost of living adjustment, sorry, in the new policy is based on the cost of living adjustment taken from July of a particular year. However, there is a limitation, it's pushed 3%. Okay, so if, for example, the COLA Okay, so if if, for example, the COLA, uh, indicator in July was five percent. Well, we cannot go above that three percent. If, for example, the the COLA adjustment came in at one point two percent. There is a, uh, limit of the of the underlying, the minimum is one point five. So you have a range between one point five and three. So if the July number came in at eight. No, it's going to be three. You know, that comes in at, uh, one point four, no, it's going to be one point five.
Thank you, uh. Through you, worship, uh, to the C A O. Like I said, I came from a, an industry that didn't have a lot of, uh. Policies, procedures and and whatnot. And apparently I misread. Uh, what was in your policy. So I apologize for that and thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
Counselor Owens?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, uh, maybe this is just typo, I'm not exactly sure. The last page of the salary grid. There are one, two, three positions that just have hourly. A wage amount of hours and pays that, but there's no jobs associated to them. And the C A O, the C E O, which I don't think we had.
You know, sorry.
The last, last page of the salary grid. So it'd be number.
It's like.
Eight, nine, seven, six, five, or empty, just hourly, no name, no positions.
Yeah, the C E O that is, sorry, Madam Mayor, to council, uh, the C E O that's the, uh, the library position.
I don't have to raise my hand. So I can speak to that? Yeah, I can speak to that, um, as a member of the library board, um, that was present. During the discussions when that was presented last term. So the reason why there is no, um, job titles is because. It opens up if we're ever to be able to hire anybody. So those jobs don't exist at the time. And they're not being paid, um, because they simply don't exist at the time of pay equity.
Okay.
But it was to to leave room open. For hiring more staff if at any time there was money in the budget to do so.
So this last page is through you again, is just specific to the library? Does it say that somewhere or did I totally miss that?
I just.
Yeah. So we have a library, yeah.
Oh, library, okay, that's right. Number two, buddy.
Yeah.
Okay, I missed one little word.
Very small writing, yeah. Counselor Shaba?
Oh, yeah, yes, thank you, uh, to you, Madam Chair, um, um. Mister C E O, uh, I'm always very, uh. Uncomfortable, uh, when there is, uh, collision between, uh, performance evaluation and and pay equity. Uh, some sometimes in my own, my own world. Uh, it seems to undermine the very basic tenet of a pay equity. So a case in point, I see item six point two-two whereby, um, there is, uh. A language about job performance. And then it loops into, let me just get there, uh, red circulate. That would be on page three of eight, item six point two-two, job evaluation system. Is somehow linked to, I mean, I don't know. It's in this, could you explain how will that play out within this, within this? So let's say we have someone that have his or her job evaluated and then evaluated down. And they'll be making less. You won't want them to make less, you red circle them. That's what it's saying here, you red circle them.
Right.
Because they will lose pay if you have to lower their wages. But the problem with that, uh, is that. In what you said here is that you red circling them to prevent growth. You said that here too. But my my biggest problem with this is that. It may breed animosity too, among other people that are doing the same job. I know seeing that this other person is red circle, is not being paid, whether they're being paid. And how do you? How do you reconcile that if you ever run into that situation? How do you reconcile it? Because I see here it was well laid out. Basically, if you had evaluated and your job is down, then we're not going to. You don't have to pay, we're just going to red circle you. But then you have people doing the same thing. But you're making more than me because you're red circled. I'm not.
But if.
So, I mean, I don't, can you clear that up for me? I I don't really understand how that will play out. How would that really play out if you ever run into that situation? That would be my question.
Madam Mayor, if I.
Yeah.
Follow you.
Yeah.
Um. If your position is red circle.
Yes.
If you held a similar position. If you were the same rate, then you'd also be red circled. So there wouldn't be any. We're not following, but we would view.
Well, if your position is red circle, let's say you're making sixty thousand dollars.
Right.
Then through job evaluation process.
Oh.
You should be making forty thousand dollars. But whenever we let you make forty thousand dollars, we keep you at fifty thousand dollars. But there are people doing the same job that you're doing that will be making forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we, what we do is. We do have a job evaluation committee that is part of this process. And where the, um, through a tool that was given by Gallagher, the consultant. We evaluate the positions. So if someone's making, if someone's doing the same job for forty thousand dollars, then someone's getting sixty thousand dollars, right? You'll have to run them through that process to see where, where the anomalies are. So so we can actually, um, uh, align appropriately. So. It's, uh, and we do have a, uh. A terms of reference for this position, for this committee. And training will be given that. So if situations like this do arise, we will address them through the committee.
I thought we better to maybe move them to that paying as well. I I I don't know, but I just. I I just see problem emanating from this. Maybe I don't understand the language, but I just see that, uh. In my, uh, past, uh, working with the college, it it breeds animosity. When people come in, I'm doing the same job as you. I'm making forty, you're making sixty because you're red circle. I don't, anyways, we'll move on. I'm okay.
Like a bit of that happening is probably.
Very welcome.
Um, because we just had the, the market evaluation, right?
Yeah, we did.
And the review of the job descriptions.
Yeah.
People knew that, from year six.
No, but I I understand what the counselor's asking question. If somebody did a re-reevaluation. And they were making a certain amount of money. You compare it to somebody else who was doing a similar type of job that was making more or less money. Then you'd have two people that are red circled that have to go back to the job evaluation committee. They'd have to establish the reviews of job. Um. The matrix from.
Again, it's apples to apples.
That's right.
Okay, okay. Counselor Owens?
Or just to add to, through you, to to his point, and like I come from a sector where your wages are not based on. Uh, your performance, that's a whole separate issue. And your wage is based on your years of experience, your qualification, and that's it.
Yeah.
So if. I'm a teacher that's been working for twenty years and my colleagues have been. Whether or not that person's a good teacher or not, it's the same thing. It's not based on your performance. So I do. Share the the concept of red circling is new to me and it's something that I find. I don't know, because I'm a union employee and that's what I've been used to for twenty years, that the job evaluation to base your wages. Something totally. Out of my comfort zone.
Okay, Counselor Ranger?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I might be able to clarify because both of your experiences are solely in a, in an environment that is. Faculty across the board. In the corporation of town of Kirkland Lake, it could be somebody in the works department and somebody in community services that. Um, on the matrix grid, be paying the same salary but different. Um, responsibilities and that's where they need to, under the equity. Be fair and and just. And so there there could be challenges and it wouldn't necessarily be based on. Like a clerk in one department and a clerk in another department versus, uh, a professor and a, and another professor. So. It just could be your, bring the references. It's much broader in the corporation of town of Kirkland Lake, their, uh, pay equity would be measured against other jobs. In my opinion.
Okay, so to, in my experience in. In a former life in healthcare, I did work in a grid system. But you were also paid for years of experience. So even though it was. Uh, like different grids for education level, me as a P S W, I got ninety-five percent, no matter how many years of service I was there. I top out at ninety-five, but I do get increases year over year and contracts. So a person, another P S W that's starting day one would make ninety-five, I'd be making ninety-five, but my wage would out. Pace theirs, even though we have the same. So I. I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time too, because I live in a different world of pay grid systems. I also see where it would happen where two individuals would have to more pay. Um, Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, through you, your worship, um. To the C A O, we may be at a bit of a disadvantage because we did not see the consultant's report, uh. I wasn't aware of this evaluation committee, for one thing. Um. Not sure what their role is. And, uh, but secondly, I'm just curious, what? What did we pay a consultant to do? How much? Pay wise did we put out?
So Counselor Kylie, just just for clarification, that was something that occurred last term?
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Yes, May.
Oh, it started. Sorry.
Yeah.
It started, yeah, sorry.
And so we we were presented that that report at the time.
Yeah.
It was a close.
Yeah, it was a close section, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Yeah.
Don't recall saying that.
One, two, that's what would be included, um, the attachment, just a kind of refresher, just what the consultant. Uh, why it wouldn't get. And, um, uh, then was a cold session report and, uh, re. Re-procuring the consultant, then it was an open session, um, uh, summary. Uh, that was presented.
Okay. Oh, boy. So I figured we asked, what was the total cost of that consulting? Do you recall?
I, that that was just before my time here. I would have to, I would have to get back to council on on that dollar now.
I do apologize, it just seemed forever ago. Okay, so any further questions or comments from council? Okay, are we comfortable on what we are voting on? It appears so. All in favor? Opposed, item carried. Item six point three, proposed performance management policy, it will be presented by C A O Alan Smith. May have a mover? Counselor Shaba, and seconded by Counselor Ranger.
It resolved that report number two thousand twenty-four, C A O eleven, entitled, proposed performance management policy be received. And that council approved the performance management policy as presented. And finally, that the performance management policy be numbered and inserted into the corporate policy magazine.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, to members of council. So we've just finished discussing the town's compensation and pay equity policy. Uh, in order to meet the objectives of that policy, it is important to have a strong performance management program. Uh, this creates a more engaged, skilled, and positive workforce. Manager does undertake performance management. However, there is not a formal guideline or policy or performance management place for the town. Performance management is an ongoing process of communication between the supervisor and employee that occurs throughout the year. The process described in the proposed policy hi-highlights three key areas. Performance planning, performance feedback and coaching, and finally, uh, performance valuation. With respect to the latter, these valuations will occur on the anniversary hiring date of the employee with a midterm review. Samples of performance valuation forms are included for council's information. Staff will receive training on the process that is contained in this policy. It's important to note that performance management valuations are just not a routine requirement. Rather, this is a collaborative opportunity for employees to leverage their strengths, address challenges. And chart a course forward towards personal professional fulfillment, which enhances individual performance, which drives organizational success. And fosters the culture of excellence of at every level. Aiding in achieving the employer's choice status through service excellence. I know. Any questions?
Any questions from the table? Counselor Kylie?
Uh, through you, worship, just a comment, uh. This is nice to see that we have a performance management policy, uh. My ten years on council. There have been a number of years that it wasn't taking place, or there was very informal discussions with. With staff. So it's nice to see that we've got a. A routine and a procedure in place. So I compliment you on that.
Anything further from members of council? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, not noted, item carried unanimously. Item six point four, updates to memorandum of understanding with Ontario Federation of Snowmobile Clubs. It will be Director of Development and Enterprise Services Dan Labrider, presenting, may have a mover? Counselor Ranger, and seconded by Counselor Kylie.
It resolved that report number two thousand twenty-four, D E V twenty-seven, entitled, Updates to Memorandum of Understanding with Ontario Federation of Snowmobile Clubs. Be received and that the mayor municipal clerk be authorized to execute an updated memorandum of understanding. With the O F S C, for snowmobile trail land use permission as presented and filed that an execution bylaw. He brought forth for three readings on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, sir. You may proceed.
Uh, good evening to you, Madam Mayor, uh, to the rest of council. I have before you tonight, an updated memorandum of understanding between the town and the Ontario Federation of Snowmobile Clubs. We currently have an M O U, uh, with the O F S C. Uh, this is simply a consolidated update to have all properties. On a single document. The O F S C is doing this across the province to gain a better understanding of their land use and liabilities. In consolidating the land use permissions in one memorandum of understanding, enables both parties, the town and the O F S C. Responsibilities, obligations, and gives O F, O F S C better understanding their liability exposure. And entering, uh, into this updated M O U guarantees the ongoing use of the snowmobile trails. And the success of our active Golden Corridor Snow, Snow Drifters Club. This club's success and cooperation is crucial to our tourism industry and economic benefit to the town. I will answer any questions.
Thank you. Anything from members at the table? Okay, Counselor Shaba? Sorry, I, Counselor Shaba?
Alright, okay, I will. Um, thank you very much, uh, through you. You don't do it light talking. Um. In your discussion session, section, you have, you indicated that, uh, the G G C S D, they. Have a ten million dollar liability insurance. Now, is it, uh, something that, uh, are we? Are we, are we on the insurance policy, the town? Usually people ask for liability insurance, well, I can make sure you have. Our names, so that if anybody ever go after the town, then we know they go after you. Is this, is that something that you're aware of? Uh, or is that something that we usually do? Thank you very much.
Yep, through you, uh, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Shaba. That would be, uh, that is on land use. Uh, policies, there would be that extension of liability. The O F S C carries a large sizable amount so that. It takes the liability responsibility off the town. And that's why they are, they are putting all of their land use and having a clear vision as to what lands they're actually using. Uh, so that they can better have, uh, have a better understanding of the liability exposure. Uh, but to answer your question, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dickens?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, to you, uh, the director, um. There's a couple of questions, but it's all related, um. In your opinion, would you say Kirkland Lake is snowmobile or friendly? And if not, or if so, is there a way that it can be more snowmobile friendly? And I say this because, uh. I remember, um, being on the back of the snowmobile and we needed gas. And we had to be very creative how we got into town to get gas because. We weren't allowed on, you know, so I'm just.
Yep, through you, um, Madam Mayor, um, to Counselor Dickens. Uh, we will have a better understanding about the framework as to how snowmobile friendly we are as a town. When we have our upcoming economic development and tourism strategic plan delivered. Um, but as a general, um, comment, uh, I think that, you know, any way that we can support. The, uh, Golden Corridor Snow Drifters, uh, in elevating their presence in the community and becoming snowmobile friendly. Um, would be a huge asset.
Any follow-up?
Um, yes, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, when can. Um, yes, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, when can we expect the economic development and tourism strategy, strategic?
Through you, Madam Mayor, it's a mouthful. Uh, we, you can expect that, uh, at the November nineteenth meeting, we're just, uh, wrapping up final details on it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything for Counselor Owens?
Through you, your worship, uh, just to clarify, um, from my days as a snowmobiler. Queen, sorry, King's highways, snowmobiles are not allowed on. Okay, that's, that's the law. That has nothing to do with municipality, and that is why it is difficult to buy gasoline. Or your snowmobile in Kirkland Lake, because all the gas stations are on the country highway. And so that's not a town. There's nothing the town can do about that? I just wanted to clarify that.
Anything further for members of council regarding the M O U? Nothing further, all in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimously, thank you. Item six point five, primary public safety, answering point P P S A P services agreement. It will be presented by Earl Greg, Director of Emergency Services and our Fire Chief, moved by. Counselor Owens, seconded by Counselor Owen.
It resolve that report number twenty twenty-four, F B S five, entitled Primary Public Safety Answering Point P P S A P Services Agreement be received. That the mayor municipal clerk be authorized to execute a service agreement with the Ontario Provincial Police. For provisions of primary public safety answering point services for a rolling term commencing on January first, twenty twenty-five. And finally, that an execution by law be brought forward for three readings on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
May proceed, sir.
Evening, Madam Mayor, council. Um, so our current agreement with, uh, the O B P is our primary, uh, nine-one answering point. Uh, it expires at the end of this year. Um, we have been given the new contract. The costing of the new contract is based by per capita from the last census. Good news is, there's no change in the cost per person to use the service. Um, which is great for us. It will slightly adjust as they do at other census. So if it, if it's in three years' time, the new census rolls out, we may see an adjustment. But the, the cost per person is still going to remain the same for the term. With that, uh, they've done a lot of backend work since twenty seventeen, that's when they announced the next generation nine-one-one service. So it's going to include, uh, touchstone, uh, voice to talk, uh, hearing impaired. Uh, when you pick up for digital service, uh, as soon as you press the send button, it automatically connects to nine-one-one. So they've done a lot of backend work, uh, with the nine-one-one system. Other than that, I'm open to questions for how the system actually functions.
Questions from the table? Non-noted, all in favor? Both, non-noted, item carried unanimously. Thank you, sir. Uh, for considerations of notice of motions, I will be asking Counselor Janice Ranger, in place of this month's acting. Mayor Counselor Kylie to come up and take seven point one and seven point two, just for ease and flow of the meeting, so thank you. Considerations of notices of motion, one, or seven point one? Can you get a mover? Oh, okay, yeah, are you gonna read it? Seven point one, Mayor Stacy White, A M C T O recommendations for updates to the Municipal Elections Act.
Moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Ray Owen. Whereas election rules need to be clear, supporting candidates and voters in their electoral participation and election administration. Administrators in running elections. And whereas legislation needs to strike the right balance between providing clear rules and frameworks to ensure the integrity of electoral process. And whereas legislation must also reduce administrative and operational burdens for municipal staff. Ensuring that local election administrators can run elections in a way that responds to the unique circumstances of their local communities. And whereas the Municipal Elections Act will be thirty years old by the next municipal and school board elections in twenty twenty-six. And whereas the M E A sets out the rules for local elections, the Assessment Act and the Education Act. Also contain provisions impacting local elections, adding workplaces for voters, candidates. And administrators look for the rules that bind the local democratic process in Ontario. And whereas with rules across three pieces of legislation and the M E A containing a patchwork of clauses. There are interpretation challenges, inconsistencies and gaps to fill. And whereas the act imposed difficulties for voters, candidates, contributors and third-party advertisers, advertisers to read, to interpret, to comply. With and for election administrators to enforce. And whereas, while local elections are run as efficiently and effectively as can be within the current legislative framework. Modernization and continuous improvement is needed to ensure the act is responsive to today's needs and tomorrow's challenges. And whereas to keep public trust and improve safeguards, uh, the act should be reviewed. Considering the ever-changing landscape, which impacts election administration, including privacy, threats of foreign interference. Increased spread of this and disinformation, and the increased use of technologies like artificial intelligence and use of digital identities. And whereas the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario, which is A M C T O. Reviewed the act and has provided several recommendations, including modernizing the legislation, harmonizing rules. And streamlining and simplifying administration. And whereas A M C T O put forward recommendations for amendments ahead of the twenty twenty-six elections and longer-term recommendations. For amendments ahead of the twenty thirty elections. Now therefore be it resolved, the council of the town of Kirkland Lake calls for the province to update the M E A. With priority amendments as outlined by A M C T O before summer twenty twenty-five. And commence work to review and rewrite the M E A with longer recommendations ahead of the twenty thirty elections. And further that this resolution be forwarded to all municipalities within the District of Timiscaming. The Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Honorable Paul Calandra, the Minister of Education, the Honorable Jill Dunlop. The Minister of Public and Business Services Delivery, the Honorable Todd McCarthy. The Minister of Finance, the Honorable Peter Bethan Paulby. The Premier of Ontario, Honorable Doug Ford, Timiscaming Cochrane Member, Provincial Parliament Parliament, John Vantoff. The Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario, A M C T O, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario.
Okay, so this did come out of the support motions we do receive, um, all, all of us, uh, receive, uh, communications. From the clerk from time to time. Um, it did originate with the Association of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario. So they are the experts, uh, when it comes to this, so, and they laid it out really, really clearly in that very lengthy and. Uh, motion, so I won't really, um, it's really, really well laid out. I do think the key points is it has been thirty years. Um, and I think we all recognize that things can't stay the same over that, that amount of time. Um, it just, I do believe that the province should be making the necessary changes to make the election administration easier. And the act clearer to follow for candidates, we've all kind of tried to navigate, some of us twice now. Um, all the, it's very, very wordy, and it's very, very complicated, and when you are a new candidate. It is, it can be very challenging to interpret. Um, so I definitely do believe that this is something that we should support, uh, not only on behalf of our clerks and treasurers. But, uh, on behalf of future candidates and, um, campaign donators as well. Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Owen, do you have anything?
Through you, Acting Mayor, I agree with everything that, that the man that. Uh, mayor said, so I, I think I couldn't say it better, thank you.
I don't think we want to have it read again, so, all in favor? Uh, seven point two, Mayor Stacy White, A M O and O M A Joint Health Resolution Campaign. Moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie. Whereas the state of healthcare in Ontario is in crisis with two point five million Ontarians lacking access to a family doctor. Emergency room closure across the province, patients being de-rostered, and forty percent of family doctors considering retirement over the next five years. And whereas it has become increasingly challenging to attract and retain an adequate healthcare workforce throughout the health sector across Ontario. And whereas Ontario municipal governments play an integral role in the healthcare system through responsibilities of public health, long-term care and parent medicine. And whereas the percentage of family physicians practicing comprehensive family medicine has declined from seventy-seven percent in two thousand and eight. To sixty-five percent in two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas per capita healthcare spending in Ontario is the lowest of all provinces in Canada. And whereas a robust workforce developed through a provincial sector-wide health human resources strategy. Would significantly improve access to health services across the province. And whereas these cracks in Ontario's healthcare system are impacting economic development, health and wellbeing at the local level. And whereas in response, the Ontario Medical Association, which is O M A. And the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, which is A M O. Are working collaboratively to advocate for a better healthcare system for Ontario residents and communities. Now therefore be it resolved, the council of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake urged the province of Ontario to recognize the physician shortages. A shortage in Kirkland Lake and Ontario to fund healthcare appropriately and ensure every Ontarian has access, access to physician care. And further that this resolution be forwarded to all municipalities within the District of Timiscaming. The Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Doug Ford, Timiscaming Cochrane, Member of Provincial Parliament, John Vantoff. The Minister of Health, the Honorable Sylvia Jones, the Ontario Med- Medical Association. The, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities.
Um, before I ask you to speak. There is a typo on ours, but yours is correct, the agenda was updated. Thank you. Okay, so again, this came from the pile of correspondence and support motions that, uh, we get forwarded through the clerk. Um, again, it is very well laid out and the reasons for bringing this forward is also very clear. Um, it is important to note that our own emergency department has been in danger of closing. Um, from time to time as well because of a lack of physicians. I just really think it's important to support our local, uh, healthcare providers. Um, we have several in our area and we need to help ease the burden that our physicians and nurse practitioners are feeling. Um, and this motion will lobby the government, and I think. As always, it's important to, to lobby the government on the items that, um. Affect our community the most. Counselor Kylie would like to add?
Yes, uh, through you, your worship, um, this one is close to my heart. Uh, as I am a member of the Health Services Facility. It, it's been an ongoing battle, uh, but we, we've had a little bit of luck in the last few years with, uh. The health unit and, uh, our health services providers. Uh, but it's getting tougher and tougher. I, I honestly think one of the incentives or things that could, uh. Hopefully, the Minister of Health would consider an incentive to attract, uh, physicians to Northern Ontario. By allowing fifty thousand a year, or whatever the case may be, as other, uh, hospitals have, uh. Uh, are now looking at doing, uh, so. It's, it's certainly high on the priority list to, uh, to ensure that our residents are getting the healthcare that they deserve. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you, Acting, Acting Mayor Ranger. We do appreciate that. Moving ahead to item eight, introduction reading and considerations of bylaws, bylaw twenty-four dash eight zero eight zero, mover. Counselor Ranger, seconded. Counselor Owen.
We resolve that the following bylaw be red-numbered, passed, signed by the mayor municipal clerk, and the seal of incorporation be fixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-four, E D, being a bylaw authorizing the execution of maintenance and liability agreement with the Royal Canadian Legion, branch eighty-seven. For the installation, uh, alteration or construction of the cenotaph monuments and memorials located, located at Wright Arteris Park.
Questions or comments? Non-noted, all in favor? That's, that's it, opposed, none, item carried unanimously. Item number nine, questions from council to staff, there were none submitted prior to the meeting. Item number ten, notices of motion, any from the table? Counselor Shaba?
Yes, I do have one here, uh, after I saw yours there, Madam Chair, I knew it was pilot program. I wanted to, uh, uh, to read investigation of the cost of E V charging stations.
Investigation of.
The cost of electric vehicle charging station, train stations, great, thank you.
Thank you, anything, anything more from the table? Okay, so just to note, I am pulling my Green Roads pilot program, um, with consultation between the C A O. And Director Forte, um, it was established that this isn't really meant for, the support motion that came in. Wasn't really meant for municipal roads, it was more for like backcountry roads, so I'm pulling that one. But in its place, I am going to bring for sustainable funding for O P P, small rural municipalities. And we had received that previously in correspondence. Um, item number eleven is councillors' reports, uh, has any member of council, attended committees or boards? Or events in the community that they wish to share over the last two weeks? Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Madam Chair, um, I attended a meeting, uh, yesterday of the, uh, Slough Front Committee and, um. The staff will be bringing something forward, I believe, uh, in future, I'm saying future, I don't know when. Uh, Sean will bring it forward, but they're, will bring something forward, well, I can say that things are moving forward. Not backwards, they're moving forward.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Counselor Owen?
Yes, through you, your worship, uh. I attended the town's hazardous, uh, waste drop-off, uh. It was very well attended, from what I could see, there was a lot of hazardous waste. Uh, I'm looking forward to the report to see how many people took part or, or how much waste was collected. I will note that, uh, it was a very efficient, uh, well-laid-out, uh. Situation, uh, you just drove in, opened your trunk or back your truck. And there was enough staff there to come over, they took it out, they placed it in the proper containers for hazardous waste and. I'm hoping that, uh, we'll be able to provide that service in, in, on a more regular basis, because it's a, it's a need that, uh, is definitely there. Also, I wanted to note in the, um. Agenda package, that we have a letter from the Chair of D S A, Derek Mungel. And, um. I want to thank the Director of Finance, Janice LaRanger, she said that the check will be delivered in October, and it was. And, uh, I'm sure it was not a small job, because she has to go through all the twenty-one, twenty-two communities and figure out. How much each one was to get, and, and that's not a small job. The good news is, that the check that Kirkland Lake received is for a hundred and ninety-three thousand. Five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And that is money out of their operating reserves. Um, they had upon review, uh, uh, upon, uh, Janice, uh. Excuse me, Ranger? Sorry, anyways, upon the Director of Finance's review. It was discovered that they were both exceeding their own policy and provincial recommendations. And that's why we were very fortunate to get that back. I also want to thank the board members of D S A. And the Director, Mark, for, uh, supporting this initiative. And, and I would recommend we put that in reserves for the day when we will be looking, uh. At a bigger increase from D S A down the road. Also, um. At the eleventh hour, the eleventh day, the eleventh month, uh, there will be a remembrance day service. At, uh, the Kirkland Lake cenotaph across the road from branch eighty-seven of the Royal Canadian Legion. Kirkland Lakers have always come out in strong support, no matter what the weather. Show their support to those who have served and those who are serving and those who are still suffering from serving. Considering the number of wars that we have going on in the world today with Ukraine, Sudan and Gaza and Lebanon, I think it's even more important that we attend that service. I would encourage people to attend that service. Those are the people who gave us the right to sit here on council, the right to elect us to sit on council. And we have so many freedoms in this country that we take for granted. But it's the people that went to war and, and, and the people that supported those who went to war that allow us to enjoy the standard life we have. So I highly recommend, if possible, that you attend the Remembrance Day service. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from members? Anything further? Okay, so it is always my pleasure to celebrate current and past Kirkland Lakers for their excellence. First, Mr. Conrad Messier for taking gold, placing first in the forty-eight plus division at the World Karate Championships. So go Kirkland Lakers, just amazing feat. Secondly, Mr. Josh Kemp, who received three honors during the two thousand and twenty-four Eastern Ontario Drama League One Act Play Festival Awards with Kanata Theatre for my narrator, including the Penny Arrell Adjudicator's Award, the Donald Endicott Coordinated Production Award and the Brighton Barn Theatre People's Choice Award. We pump out such a diverse level of excellence in our community. It is not just one field, but we are breeding excellence in Kirkland Lake and sending them out into the world and we should be super proud of our people and I definitely am. I did take a drive this morning during one of the many downpours today. And I do want to recognize the difference. The work in our drainage and culvert system appears to be making in the Dixittin Pollock area. Eventually we'll get to a place that I won't even mention it anymore because it will become just routine maintenance. But after having so many years of flooding being an issue, I am glad to be able to point out that the work Mr. Forte's department is doing towards rectifying the years-long issues over there. Great jobs, ladies and gentlemen of the Public Works Department. And I'd written that before we knew that we were going to be with the guest today. So I met with the Executive Director and Board Chair of NeoFAX regarding the support of the revised funding model promised by the Ontario Government. They are building a motion, hoping to gain support or forum. I have also invited them to delegate to council to share with us and the public the services they provide to this community. I have been recently elected Chair of the Texentennial Library Board due to the resignation of our devoted and ongoing member Shirley Scott. I attended the AGM of Kirkland and District Community Development Corporation along with their Board of Directors, members of the media and other representatives of the communities they serve in the area. I presented the ninetieth anniversary certificate to the Kirkland and District Horticultural Society. I just want to note that that society was in danger of folding because of lack of interest in recent years. And they are coming back and growing, if you all appreciate a gardening pun. And so, you know, it's just wonderful to see a group like that thriving over ninety years. We held the first Mayor's Breakfast with the community business owners. Guest speaker was Mr. Sean O'Connor of Hogars, who spoke about the longevity in business. His business has enjoyed over generations. Though it was an introductory meeting, I am hopeful it will continue and expand to offer valuable learning opportunity and open the lines of communication between business and the municipality. And future mayors will see the value in connecting directly with groups of people with vested interest in our community. Councillor Owen and I attended the Timiscanee Municipal Association Meeting in which delegations from DSAB and MPAC were received. Both groups highlighted the services they provide to the communities in our area. I met with, or we met with members of Tippi First Nation regarding their business interests in our community. Chief June Black spoke of her personal connections to Kirkland Lake while her team laid out plans they have for current businesses and possible expansions. I attended the Ontario Northland Maintenance Facility opening in Inglehart. This eleven million dollar expansion was celebrated by more than fifty people, including Ontario Northland CEO Chad Evans, Mayor Doug Metzen, Deputy Mayor Pamela Bannock, Chad of Inglehart Administration and local Ontario Northland employees. Congratulations to that community. Welcomed councillor Owen's class to council chambers. Welcoming students is always a highlight of my week. I enjoyed watching their choice of elected members debate one of the issues that had been previously brought to our council table and hearing the differing opinions of the next generation of leaders. I hope other schools continue to arrange visits at the Town Hall throughout the two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five school sessions. I attended the voluntary merger Zoom with ministry reps and other board chairs and staff from various boards of health in which we were able to ask questions about the process and hear updates from the province regarding volunteer board, health, Board of Health mergers. Economic Development Meeting, in which we were presented the draft version of the Economic Development and Tourism Strategic Plan, which will be coming to council shortly, as per the question by councillor Dykes earlier. The volunteer merger working group meeting was today with the actual members of THU and PHU. And we continue to move forward to a successful merger to strengthen public health, both in Porcupine Health Units and Timiscanee Health Unit as the northeastern region. Lastly, I do want to take a moment this evening to thank the quiet volunteers in this community. Often you see recognition of groups of volunteers like the Rotary, Lions, Save the LaSalle, a Hundred Women Who Care. And the work those groups of like-minded individuals do within our community is incredible. But I do want to acknowledge the impact of single individuals within our community that give their time on their own quietly, without fanfare or the spotlight ever being shone upon them. If you are one of those people who quietly give of yourself, I want you to know your actions have a positive effect in our community. You are community builders and you deserve accolades as well. Though your photo may not show up in news or on social media, the lives you touch are forever changed for the better because of you and our community owes you a debt of gratitude. Thank you for your indulgent council members. Move by? Councillor Dyken, seconded by councillor Kylie.
Be resolved that the verbal updates for members of council be received.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. Item number twelve, twelve point one. Unless somebody, does the table want to take a brief recess or power through? We're going to power through. Let's go. Twelve point one, proclamation. Whereas each year Canadians take the time to remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. And whereas annually, citizens nationwide formally pause on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month to remember those who trained and fought for our country, with some paying the ultimate sacrifice, some coming home whole and others not so fortunate. And whereas this year, the Town of Kirkland Lake hereby declares November fifth to the eleventh as Remembrance Week to remember those who fought and died for Canada. And whereas during Remembrance Week, we honor and pay our respects to those who fought and died, those who came home broken in body and in spirit, and those who continue to fight for peace and the freedoms we enjoy today. And whereas Indigenous peoples have a long history of military service, including contributions to the First and Second World Wars, Korean War and continuing today, their contributions help protect the peace and freedom enjoyed in Canada and countries around the world. And whereas November eighth is recognized as Indigenous Veterans Day to commemorate the bravery, courage, service and sacrifice of Indigenous veterans. And whereas during Remembrance Week, everyone is encouraged to support their local Royal Canadian Legion branch and wear a poppy in remembrance of the fallen. And whereas the Town of Kirkland Lake recognizes the bravery, courage and sacrifices of all Canadian veterans, whether on current peacekeeping missions here at home, assisting in search and rescue or assisting with natural disasters across the country and internationally with continued honor for those who are serving and their families. Now therefore, I, Stacey White, Mayor of the Town of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim November fifth to the eleventh as Remembrance Week and do hereby proclaim November eighth, two thousand and twenty-four as Indigenous Veterans Day in the Town of Kirkland Lake. And I have a mover. Councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Ranger.
Be resolved that council sanction a proclamation for Remembrance Week and Indigenous Veterans Day, November fifth to the eleventh and November eighth in the Town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number twelve point two is the DSAB refund from Working Fund Reserve as noted by councillor Owen. There will be a report forthcoming. If there is any questions, I believe the treasurer can answer quick questions before his report. Councillor Shaba? If you have a question?
Oh yeah, through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm very delighted that we're getting some money back from DSAB. I had money from anywhere, it's always a delight. So my question to you is, what are we planning to do with this money? Do we set it aside at our reserve? You never know, people might leave the money in the future or do we utilize the money for other pressing projects that we have ongoing. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Councillor Shaba? It's my intention to include it with, in December, we provide a report about transfers to reserve to and from reserves. So it's my intention to include it with that particular policy or bylaw to transfer it into a reserve for future use. Much like the health unit one that we have now would be in anticipation of movement in the, in the DSAB budget. Of course, council, you know, it is their prerogative to choose a different path. So you could, we could take it all into income in this year. Again, what's going to come in front of you will be a transfer to reserves, at which point you guys will have your the option to approve it or change it.
Thank you. Anything further from councillor Kylie?
Through you, your worship. I may be a bit ahead of myself, but I'd like to see that money go into reserve towards the two thousand and twenty-five budget where we're looking at a seven hundred thousand dollar payment towards OPP services. I'm just leaving that food for thought rather than DSAB. The DSAB money come right out of our operating funds originally. So if it was going back into operating, it would help the tax burden, reduce the tax burden of seven hundred thousand. Food for thought.
Thank you for that opinion. I do want to note that special thanks, I have noted in the past that thanks does go to councillor Owen for bringing this. This was an item that began a few councils ago with councillor Todd Morgan. And so councillor Owen was able to do something that previous councils were not. So, so definitely kudos go to representatives from that board. Yes, sir.
Through you, your worship. All I did was ask for a review of the reserve funds. It was a very friendly request. It wasn't confrontational. And the board backed me on that, including the CAO part. So it went in on a friendly basis. The Director of Finance for DSAB, Janice LaRanger, did all the work on it. And when I got the report back, I was just expecting a report saying we have this much reserve here, this much reserve here and this much reserve there. Instead, she came back, explained how it wasn't in line with policy and made a recommendation as to how much would be transferred to the housing reserve to, because their housing stock is very old and how much would be returned. So really, you know, it was a win-win for everybody. And I, all I did was ask on a friendly basis, which is, I know people remember sitting there going, Rick, friendly? No, but yeah, friendly works sometimes.
Good job. Anything, yes, sir.
I'm not sure. Can I ask any more questions?
I believe so.
Oh, okay. I, I just, I just sit on the board. Is there a mechanism in place now going forward that will ensure that we don't run into all these subplots? Because municipalities are bleeding. I mean, the money that they don't have, they don't have it, but they have to shell it all out. Is there a way, mechanism whereby after that, they have that two months ahead and whatever excess, whatever surplus that's there will trigger automatic refund to municipalities? Instead of you, somebody like you in future asking for a review that may yield something, this kind of outcome. I thought it will have something going forward through there.
Yeah, through you, your worship, to councillor Shaba. For the next two years, there is, and its name is Rick Owen. Okay? After that, I I do not know, but the fact that this happened once now. There will be carryover on the boards after next two years. And I'm sure it will continue, although there was no policy change by DSAB or or any thing like that. But it's happened once now and the precedent's set. And I'm sure that, well, I know for the next two years, I'll be asking the same question and it'll go from there.
Councillor Kylie?
Yeah, just to comment further, through you, your worship. The DSAB board does have a policy. I don't know if it's the equivalent of three months expense to be put in reserve each year. There is a policy in place. This kind of eroded a little bit. But through our efforts, we're going to get through.
Excellent. Sorry, I do apologize as this was for information only. I didn't forget to get a mover and a seconder to discuss at the table. So can I have a mover to discuss? Well, yeah, councillor Owen, seconded. Councillor Shaba, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Be resolved that the DSAB refund from Working Fund Reserve be received in information.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. There is no, thank you, Mr. Crawford. There is no closed session this evening. Therefore, there is no matters from closed session. Item number fifteen point one, bylaw number twenty-four dash zero eight one, moved by councillor Dyken, seconded by councillor Owen.
Be resolved that the following bylaw be red-numbered past, signed by the Mayor Municipal Clerk and the seal of incorporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-four eighty-one, being a bylaw confirmed in proceedings of council at its meeting called Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number sixteen, adjournment made of a mover and councillor Dyken. Owen, face the room yet? No, we don't even have to vote. Sorry.